Thank you. The following address is a place on consent agenda for the re-communicator from the Ziegler's one of the council, two to be member of the council or the others wishing out loud and remove the consent agenda for individual consideration, please say so now will remove the decision to follow approval of remaining consent items. Consent items approved, ministry closed session and council meeting in the October 2005 payroll with pay period ending June 28th in the amount of $254,509.11 staff reports and Curry Chicken Art Festival road closure to add most your approved consent agenda items. Sub move.
Sub.
Please call roll.
Councilmember Connet?
Aye.
Councilmember Collier?
Aye.
Councilmember Serbich?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Next we have approval of the bills from July 14th in the amount of $2,152,903.11. We have motion approved payment of the bills.
Sub move.
Sub.
End of discussion.
I want a few things for just clarification here, can you tell us well when the motor, did we replace it, repair it, what's going on with that?
We had to replace it.
Okay, so I mean that's the thing, that's something that we were planning to work on with our water was?
It was not anything we planned, it was, it stopped working, so.
Okay. Um, what were we doing, some electrical upgrades over there as well, but that's just for the new well?
Um.
What did we just do, we just did some, uh, one of the pumps, that well?
We're, we're replacing the pump at well one, I believe well five also had a pump that needs replaced.
Okay.
Uh, it happens to them sometimes with just.
I feel like six months ago we just replaced the well, or is this, is that well one?
Well three.
Well three we just replaced?
We did.
Okay.
Those are the three that we've done in the last year and a half, two years.
Um, Blackwood Tree Service for?
I have that on my list.
Just what triggered that and what would we be moving for, can you tell us about that?
Um, I have multiple trees with that amount of money.
That was the one they really had to bring the crane in, and wondering if that was the South Park?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that, that tree, I live there, that tree has a really bad issue of dropping bark and dropping limbs and it was plugging up, um, there's outlets right there and every time it stormed, it was really bad. I believe that's one of the reasons why.
Twenty-two, they owe $26,000 to them.
They had to bring in a crane, it was a couple days project, it was quite ordeal, it was a big tree. The other one was Crossment.
Did anything else too?
No. That one?
That one was.
Close to Chesapeake?
The park was just one and then yes, no, um, cottage, cottage prospectively.
I have those about there. The other, I mean, the one that says Roosevelt Avenue, but the twenty-four thousand just says tree removal.
James?
When we put these in, can we, like, I like how it says Roosevelt Avenue, can we have that on the bigger number?
What do you mean the bigger number?
The twenty-four doesn't have it, I'm just saying anytime we enter that, it just says tree, it just says tree removal, but the one below it says Roosevelt Avenue.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what came up, I'm just gonna note that the one is for twenty-four thousand, I had it covered with Kathleen, but this one is being covered by grant funds. So this is an association with the USDA grant, a big grant that we have for, so that's that one. The other reason why it's just, it's Roosevelt, is that's related to something that's normal within the city's tree.
So we didn't put anything because it's a grant?
Right, and the other thing is it's probably more associated with that particular expense than just normal tree removal. How about we can forward you the information regarding this, but it's associated with the grant.
Did we put that out for bidding with that price?
We should, I would have to verify and I can verify, get you an answer on that, what we're supposed to for that price?
I think there's stipulations with the grant in terms of public spending that money, so that should come with theories, information associated with this.
I actually didn't remember seeing that, I just wondered what other, you know, bidding or if nobody bid because of the complexity. I did see it, it was, it was a pretty complex effort, they were, you know, they were using cranes just to get, you know, men up to cut a tree, it was pretty impressive.
Yeah, we'll get you a summary for that, particular grant, and it's again, it's a reimbursable expense.
That's correct.
Anything else?
Yeah. The Economic Development Group payments, who is the Economic Development Group, what are we, what are we getting for these payments, these seem to be dues type things?
The Economic Development Group is a consulting firm, we use their essentially a branch or an offshoot of, of TIF attorneys, so half of the bill goes, essentially half of what we're contracted for pays for their work as the attorneys and the other half pays for their work in just managing our TIF, uh, program as far as the state reporting and doing the math to make sure that we're not overpaying people, we're paying for things that aren't allowable. They're the TIF administrator for the setting and that's kind of what that pays for. It's still the same group of people, Jacob and Klein.
Another similar, okay, Jacob and Klein, yeah, so those two go together?
Yes.
And then, uh, just might hear you ask, health equity, what, what is health equity?
They manage, they're the third party committees, our health savings account.
Okay. So this is our contributions for our employees' health?
No, that's our administration costs. Oh, it probably shows, so. I'll let Jamie answer.
Yeah, so employees set aside funds to pay for health expenses and because it's reimbursable expenses, we don't count as income, it hits the expense account. So what they usually spend before, some don't, but they usually spend before, so usually the expense hits well before the reimbursement comes. Sometimes the reimbursement comes before, so you'll see a negative expense in there until they spend. To the extent that it's, doesn't get spent, I think it's like twelve to eighteen months, they get a roll over three to six months after that, if they don't spend it, then it goes back to the city and that, that particular expense is zeroed out at the end of the fiscal year and summed up. But again, it's not then until that three to six month window and in the next.
Okay, so this is kind of share with Blue Cross, Blue Shield?
This is a prepaid health savings account, so people have money deducted from their paychecks every month and then pays for their, uh, co-pays at the doctor's office or prescriptions or any eligible expense.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll see another one, so there are two, one's FSA and HSA, right, the FSA is, the HSA is just a couple of those.
Yeah, sure, I remember the HSA, just didn't, health equity, I just wasn't sure how that worked with.
Yeah, because they're the ones that it's done.
Okay. Hutchinson Engineering, the Ozleyland ran it, uh, what was in that, uh, billing, that invoice, what?
I would suspect that was for, uh, construction, uh, observation at Francis Park watching the installation of playground equipment.
That's just management. Other.
We'll recover under the grant.
Um, then the IME Corporation, Lionell, but Lionell was done, what else did we need to do there, is that finishing up payment for?
I think they're just finishing up the payment, um, for the, again, construction inspection. When they came through, there were a few punchless items that needed fixed, there was a little sinking area that they had to come back in and fix and had to, uh, do a few small things and it's just wrapping that up.
Uh, debris cleanup at West Division, labrador construction, what was that debris from, is that just still from storm?
I would have to look into that and get to an answer. Public works here right now to answer that.
Okay. I said one, um, there's the Purple Onion, I know it's at Anawon, says meals, and seventeen bucks for ten miles from Kewaunee every night you can outback this.
Uh, because there was a Henry County Economic Development Partnership Tourism Meeting there and that's, yeah, you go where the purpose.
No, that's fine, I mean, as long as, as long as that's what it was and it wasn't someone stopping there.
Was the definition of tourism right there?
I mean, that is, but I was just making sure that we weren't stopping on the way in from a training and, you know, we need there more than amounts outside of that.
That it?
That's it.
Please call roll.
Councilmember Collier?
Aye.
Councilmember Serbich?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Connet?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
We will also public comments, um.
Oh, I gotta talk to you a second.
You need glasses?
I will ask, anybody wants to address the council, step forward, I can't ask you to use the microphone, it's, I don't think it's working, but, uh, something is not on the agenda, now is the time to form a talk and try to speak loudly so we can hear you since you don't have a microphone, what?
And then more, on that. You, sir. Good, good, how are you? Good, good. This is producer here, um, it's for you, this is Baker, this is producer. You guys doing, thanks for Bradley, Casey.
It's not working, it's not working.
Oh, it's not working, it's microphone, okay.
We're gonna talk about where our.
Oh, I know, I know, it's no problem.
He does.
Uh, my name is Nathan McCarry, I work at Solar On Earth, uh, Chadwick, Illinois, Carroll County, it's actually not too far away from here, and, uh, I've been talking to, uh, the city since about March about those, uh, community solar projects that we're building, we're actually building solar farms all over the state right now, pretty much from here all the way down to Mounds, if anyone knows where that is, it's, uh, I've actually mentioned it and some people knew where it was, I was actually surprised, so, uh, we just signed on the Village of Princeville and there are solar farmers in Mounds and like half of the Princeville knew where Mounds was, I was like, you guys are playing a joke on me and I guess back in the day, their wrestling team played, uh, the wrestling team down in Mounds, I was like, okay, I guess so, so, it's a big state, right, so sometimes you get surprised, um, so I've, uh, been talking to Mayor Moore, Mr. Bradley, there's a bunch of different things that, uh, we were talking about, I had a really good conversation with the energy consultant, uh, for Kewaunee, really smart guy, we went back and forth, uh, worked at Mid-American for ten years, I actually learned a couple things from him, that's why I like talking to these consultants, some of them can give you information, some of them, you know, we're just talking about energy, so, I'm here to talk to the, to Kewaunee about a, a group of projects that we're building with Microsoft Computer Corporation and, um, it's a, it's a pretty special portfolio of projects, more or less these solar farms that are getting built, and I'm only talking about the ones that are under fifty acres, not eight hundred acres, the projects that we're building are under fifty, they're capped by Illinois Shines, and the state says, uh, you know, we need more solar, we need other type of energy, not just because it's solar, but the grid is old, we're updating all sorts of things on the substations, pretty much every substation that we're building one of these solar farms in needs above five hundred thousand dollars minimum in upgrades because the grid is old, that just goes back into, uh, a major catastrophe happening and the grid not being able to support that, that's pretty much where we're at, uh, my sister's an intelligence officer in the Air Force, we have this discussion all the time, it's a real problem, so you might see the solar and think, one thing, there's more stuff going on behind the actual, uh, grid, uh, functioning, pretty much, uh, Illinois and a few other states are almost on one grid, uh, but that's not exactly why I'm coming, uh, to Kewaunee, uh, to talk about that tonight, I've had, uh, a pleasure working with quite a few of the municipalities and school districts in the area and, uh, after talking to the energy consultant, because Kewaunee is on a, a special billing program with third-party supply, which is totally fine, we don't want to, uh, mess up any of the rates that the city's getting, the city's spending about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in electricity right now, these credits that we would be able to put on, uh, the electric bill would cover about two hundred and forty-two thousand of that, saving, uh, Kewaunee forty-five thousand dollars a year, that's real money, that would be found money, uh, Ameren just announced a twenty to fifty percent increase just for summer rates, uh, I don't think people think that that's going to be going down anytime soon, uh, we're also working, so I just want to mention some other, uh, municipalities and school districts that we're working with right now in the area, we're working with the city of Pekin, Village of Morton, Bartonville, Galesburg School District, the city of Canton, uh, Princeville, uh, city of LaSalle, and we're also working with the Kewaunee School District, we have them on the same program, I work with Rebecca Bani over there, and, uh, you know, we're, we're pretty much kind of wrapping up a big part of this portfolio in Ameren, more or less the, uh, you know, the market in Ameren right now is offering about ten percent for a community solar, uh, discount and we're offering Kewaunee twenty percent, which is pretty much double, double the market, uh, this agreement is pretty, uh, it's, it's definitely a lot different than any other, it's a ten-year term with two five-year extensions, at any time Kewaunee doesn't want forty-five thousand dollars a year for free off their electric bill, at any time, uh, the city could say, hey, we're going to give you our one hundred and eighty-day notice, we would take those credits off the bill, uh, there's no termination fee. One thing I did want to mention is, um, the credits that we would be applying to the two hundred and forty-two thousand part of the bill, if that goes up, let's say in five years it goes up to three hundred and fifty grand, which is pretty realistic, who knows, no one really knows, but if it does, um, our credits will also increase in proportion to whatever rates go up and then the city would also just get twenty percent off of that, if, um, some sort of crazy technology is designed and Kewaunee's powered by a black box somewhere in the ground and the bill goes from two forty-two down to one fifty, our credits would also decrease in proportion to whatever it decreases and then the city would just get twenty percent off of that, so there's no risk, uh, like a power purchase agreement where the city is saying, we're buying, we're going to buy power X amount per kilowatt hour, that's not what this is, this is just a fixed twenty percent discount off of, uh, two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars of the annual spend for the city. No. And I'm sure the city could find many other ways to, to put forty-five thousand dollars back into something else, into a playground, um, I don't know, making, doing something, you know, um, but I would say that forty-five thousand dollars is a little bit more than, uh, what the average city is going to save, uh, from community solar, so like Princeville spends, I think, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, so they were really happy to get twenty percent, um, I know the school district is going to save less than forty-five thousand dollars a year, they're really excited to get onto the program, so we have plenty of references, other directors of finance, all throughout the state, other superintendents, um, you know, we'd love to work with the city, we're already working with the school district, so, does anyone have any questions by any chance?
You don't want my words for the Kewaunee?
What was that, sir?
What school is she talking about?
Uh, I don't know the number, because I know there's two.
He's a, he's a better, he's our guy. Kewaunee's. Those who have solar panels, that's like, you know, students.
Yeah, they actually, Mr. Baker, they actually both have solar, uh, and they're just like Galesburg, so Galesburg, John Aswin over in Galesburg, Kewaunee, I haven't talked to this gentleman, the superintendent over at the other school yet, I haven't got a chance, but, um, you're actually allowed to do both in Illinois, uh, and that was one question that came up from Mr. Bradley about the water treatment plant, like, uh, is there solar on the treatment plant or you guys are getting that?
We're getting it.
Okay, so this won't interfere with anything with the water treatment plant, because the water treatment plant's only going to cover our portion of the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar bill, so you would still be able to save this forty-five thousand dollars on top of whatever you guys end up doing.
Well, I was in school war, but both of them got theirs and we were told that we had to, we had to take care of the solar panel once that turned up, the same way, it's the same thing, you know, that's what, basically we're, and correct me if I'm wrong, Nathan, you're basically asking us to, if I look at this correctly, um, instead of paying Ameren, we would go through community solar and that's where bills would come from, correct?
So imagine.
So you're using the power that you get in your solar farm in Mounds for the power of the city.
Okay.
Through a grid, we're not, we're not doing any solar payment, we're just buying the chunk of their grid and energy that they're producing today at the special one, and we're doing that.
Um, so Chris, so imagine you have a bill that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, we're just going to round that out, and that bill on average is two fifty divided by twelve, the only thing that would change is on the second page of the electric bill, you'd still have your third-party supplier and Ameren, there would just be a new line item, line item on the second page of the electric bill, so if the bill's average twenty, let's say the bill's twenty-one thousand dollars a month, on the second page of the bill, there would just be one new line item that says community solar credit, negative nineteen thousand dollars, that nineteen thousand dollars would get deducted off of the total due, forty days later, we would bill Kewaunee exactly twenty percent less that credit that we would put on the bill, billing the city fifteen thousand two hundred dollars for that credit, it's literally the best deal in the state for saving money for community solar, like I said, it's double the market rate and the reason why we're able to do that is we're building a special portfolio with Microsoft that, and key, we don't feel like there's any risk in doing business key with Kewaunee, the risk for us is we put these credits on someone's bill and then they don't pay us back for those credits, we don't think that's a problem with Morton or Elmwood School District or Galesburg School District and it's a long-term, uh, outlook for us, you know, and we don't, and that's the other part of why we put that one eighty day out in there, if someone really doesn't want twenty percent on their bill, we're not going to force them to keep it, uh, traditionally, uh, like I said, the MAC you'll see is ten to eleven percent in Ameren with a fifteen to twenty-year walk-in, no way out, no way out, like, you can't modify it, okay, we got the water treatment plant covered with solar, they won't technically even let you downsize the amount of kilowatt hours, you're, you're buying X amount of kilowatt hours for fifteen years, this is pretty, oh, we need less credits, yeah, great, just give us a hundred and eighty day notice, so if like, Kewaunee had some, I don't think this would ever happen because you can't because of the way Ameren works, but let's say that, um, uh, you know, Kewaunee all of a sudden didn't want two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars worth of solar credit, so you could give us a hundred and eighty day notice and say, hey, we only want a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to save twenty percent off of that, or a hundred and eighty day notice that come completely off the program, I don't think that would ever happen with the city, I'm just saying, these are, it's pretty, pretty open-ended type of agreement.
And so you're asking for ten by five, is that what the agreement was?
Yep, yep, it's, it's, uh, you know, but it could be a hundred-year agreement, it has a hundred and eighty day out, it is a ten-year agreement with two five-year extensions, yeah.
And if I'm looking at this correct, over the twenty years, you're estimating at the low end cost manager, one thousand dollars in savings?
I think that's extremely conservative, but yeah, um, that's, that's, that's pretty much pretending that rates will stay the same for twenty years.
Yeah.
Which is fine, looking at it that way, I mean, we're dealing with cities and stuff, we have to pretend rates might stay the same for twenty years, I think we all know that that's, there's no proof that it won't though, so that's why you got to kind of pretend that it might, you know, um, but if rates, if rates go up at four percent, which is technically three and a half percent, Kewaunee would save around one point two million, I still think that that number's low, but you could still go with nine hundred grand instead of paying an extra nine hundred thousand dollars, you know?
What were some of the investments you were speaking about in the infrastructure of the grid?
Oh, yeah, um, Ameren's not as bad, ComEd's like really bad right now, almost out of, uh, like, let's say we're doing ten projects in ComEd, we actually are probably only able to get one through right now because the cost to upgrade the substations are so ridiculous, I mean, we're getting quotes back for five million dollars and then if you're building a project that costs five million bucks, you can't really blend five million dollars in upgrades into a five million dollar project and you're just like, oh, I'll go look for another substation, you know, um, so that's, we're, we're not there in Ameren yet, uh, but yeah, I would say, uh, in Ameren, I don't know, minimum a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a substation, almost every, and we're building, we're going to be building a bunch of projects in New Mexico and everybody was like shocked that every substation in New Mexico needs to be upgraded, it's just, the grid is really old, um, and unfortunately, the utility actually tells you what the price is, you cannot bring a third-party electrical company to do an upgrade on a substation, you're kind of at the mercy of, what's that?
The cost of the cost.
Yeah, um, I mean, because I've, I've, yeah, and Massachusetts, we actually, we, we have a lot of experience in community solar, I joke about that with farmers, we've been doing this for twelve years, it makes us a veteran in solar and farming, it makes you a new, but, um, we've seen how this program kind of has played out in multiple other states and, you know, the discount starts at the highest, when the incentives are the highest to kind of give out, then it goes down and down and down and that's when a new state kind of opens up and then most of the new projects are getting built over there, uh, there's already a five percent, uh, discount available in Ameren right now, by the way, so the, the market's already moving towards that, uh, New York started at ten percent six years ago and pretty much most of the market is at five percent in New York, uh, Massachusetts started at twenty percent about eight years ago, that market's at about seven percent, so it's just, it's just a pattern, so it would be pretty advantageous if Kewaunee could reap the maximum benefit, uh, literally the purest definition of found money off of the city, you know?
How fast are you looking for a decision?
How fast do you guys want to save forty-five thousand dollars a year?
Not.
I'm just kidding, Mayor Moore, but, what was that?
So not passing up the due diligence.
Um, I mean, I've been talking to Mr. Bradley, your energy consultant yourself, since March, it's not like we just showed up here randomly tonight, you know?
I, uh, I have a friend that's heavily involved in solar, he's giving some information for me.
What kind of solar does he do?
Well, he's pretty much an expert in the field, Kevin Yepsen.
Kevin Yepsen, does he have a company?
He's in the banking industry, but, uh, he's been in the field, he's lost a million awards, solar boards.
Solar boards?
Yes.
Okay, so what did he say about twenty percent?
I haven't had that discussion with him yet.
Okay.
We're going to.
Yeah, I mean, if anyone, um, and I believe it talked to, yeah, talked to your energy consultant, I mean, he confirmed that's the best deal that he's seen in Illinois State too.
What's the, what's the catch?
The catch is we pretty much just give the power to someone else at the end of the day because we have X amount of power, twenty percent, we have a good amount at eleven percent, but I feel like if someone doesn't want to do this at twenty, they're most likely not going to do it at eleven, you know, that's kind of the reality, or they, or they might be too prideful and be like, oh, we missed out, so we're just not going to do anything, I don't know, I've been doing this for a while, I've seen, so, Galesburg School District, they had a seven-one vote, uh, the one guy who voted no, his reason was because we put too much emphasis on saving money that night with solar and not enough, uh, emphasis on the wrestling team that just came back from a championship, so, you just never can appeal to everybody, I've had, um, my lowest vote was like a two-six and then, um, after that they all, and this is, I'm not going to mention the name, it's a city that's not doing well financially, immediately after that, they all voted, uh, yes for a one point seven million dollar fire truck, which is fine, it's just. is fine, it's just, you know? You can't make everybody happy, but we're, we are at least presenting, you know, these savings. Mr. Moore, if you want to put me in touch with your expert, I would love to be able to uh, you know, show him that 20% is the best possible deal for Kewaunee.
I will see if you mind if I share your information with you.
Um, you know, doing nothing is going to save the city nothing?
I, I would definitely pass your information on to him and hopefully he'll be in contact with you.
Okay. What is the board uh, think about something like this?
Well, on the surface, I think it looks great.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, saving that kind of money looks great. Uh, we just want to make sure that we're not beating ourselves up and hoping something that is not too good to be true, right? I mean, $45,000 is a lot of money, but what is that, what are we getting locked into and whatnot? I just, I don't, it's not every day that you get somebody coming up and saying, here's 45 grand, I gotta be silent, dotted line right here, you know?
Yup. I have plenty of attorneys that we work with in Illinois that could, um, that Mr. Lester could reach out to that's worked with us, gone through our agreement. Um, you know, we're working with maybe uh, probably 50 public entities right now in Illinois.
Mr. Riley, so we can check that out.
We're working with 500 McDonald's in Illinois. They took nine months to go through their legal process to approve the program for all their franchisees.
McDonald's will be a lot quicker on that, a lot quicker than that.
Mr. Bear's going to save 250, he goes to do the paperwork with the secretary, I understand. But you know, we still want to make sure that Kewaunee has the availability to be able to participate in these programs too, you know? So.
So is it scalable? Like if we aggregate uh, a business district or something like that, if you add benefit to our, to our residents, to our businesses, our merchant districts?
We wouldn't be able to do those at 20% because we're really only offering 20% to municipalities, cities, hospitals, uh, large investment-grade companies. Dot Foods, for example, down in um, Brown County, they're a pretty big company, Seneca Foods. We would be able to do 15%. So the 20% is pretty much just reserved for a specific type of, I gave as much as I could to McDonald's and then they said, no more McDonald's, that we've already tapped out with the McDonald's and then we wanted to give as much as we could to the community. So yeah, we could definitely roll it out to uh, the businesses in Kewaunee. I'm actually working on that right now when we come up with consolidated, because we have so many cities already signed on. Once the state approves us to just um, almost like uh, the aggregate, like the city does for the residents, we would roll that out for the residents, for the city. And instead of it being dual billing, it's going to be approved for consolidated. So people will just all automatically get a credit on their bill, you know?
With all due respect, we, we do have to get to the regular agenda.
No problem, Mr. Moore.
And uh, we do have somebody from out of state that is waiting online for this first time in the agenda. I, I definitely would love to hear more about this and uh, I know, we really do need to move on with our regular agenda items.
Okay, thank you guys for your time.
We will have the contact information, I will share that with Kevin and hopefully you can get it up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor Moore. Goodnight, guys.
Thank you.
Emails wish to address the council. We'll move on to new business. We're open with the presentation from City Director, this is a presentation by Comer James from City Detective.
All right, Comer, you're good to go.
Hi. All right.
Apologize for the delay.
We apologize for the delay.
That's totally okay, thank you. I am going to share my screen here, I want to make sure everybody sees it. Everyone see what I got here?
Yes.
If anything, if you get up a move so you can see better, you'll be, be very moved. What was that?
Uh, he was just telling people in the audience that they can move if they want to see the screen.
Excellent, okay. Uh, now I will uh, jump right into, well, good evening. Uh, thank you all for having me. Uh, my name's Comer James and I represent the City Detective. Thank you for the introduction as well. We specialize in advanced computer vision technology to help cities such as Quaney address, move, drive proactively and efficiently. And briefly, we should also be taking augment existing workflows and improve the quality of life for your residents. Okay. Uh, so that is, it's a lot of cameras, you can see them here, about the size of my hand. Um, they're not on city vehicles, uh, to stay in neighborhoods and automatically identify property and roadside issues. As the vehicle travels its regular routes, the cameras automatically capture every single person in a roadside issue that they pass automatically, whether it's stopping, starting, or pressing any buttons, or pressing a button to snap a picture of life. This analysis grabs all code enforcement uh, issues, um, issues like overgrowth, litter graffiti, road graffiti, all of that staff manually inspecting every individual property. Uh, this is built up the international property maintenance code. Uh, so all of those violations are included in the list of detections that we can pick up on, as well as many other detection sets that we have built out with our clients. And so these are easily accessible to increase the efficiency of their on-site flows and focus their resources more effectively, right? Otherwise, we have service as well. Um, our partners, it's not too happened yet, seen a reduction in the administrative caseload using this organizational tool. Um, and our imagery is also utilized as an educational tool for their residents. So, which has led to an increase in voluntary compliance. Because with this visual data set, you're able to display to residents exactly what's going on and exactly what you're looking at. So there's a process of action, right? As this camera goes back, picking up on all these individual uh, graffiti tags in this case. Uh, this isn't much you can see on the actual web application, but uh, this is the computer in action, right? So the level of reliability is we're able to tell the difference between uh, new graffiti tags and public art. This is in the city of Atlanta where I'm from, right now, and public art is a big part of the culture here. And so we're able to tell the difference between that, right? So sort of regularity applies to this letter here. As we're just driving by, there's no sort of speed limit, we recommend like the highway speeds for whatever vehicle the camera starts on. We're going to pick up all of these individual pieces of wood as they pass, right? And this is our, it is a, next slide, there we go. And this is all visible on our web-based application. Uh, this is a web-based service, so it's just a login, um, just like logging into your email or any other account you have on the internet. And if there's a map, we have to attach it for different purposes and I won't get into the big street details of the map. If you're able to zoom in, they click on individual boxes and hit the brand new property report of that property, um, every single time these uh, these cameras pass that specific property, right? And when you filter, it filters systems to say you want to see all the overbound laws in the city from the previous week, you simply filter it and you're able to see that to triage and gain weight for uh, a future week, right? And then the functionality, uh, we have traffic, our system uh, also reports the exact vehicle routes taken by inspectors or city vehicles that are equipped with these cameras. Uh, this shows that every street is covered, right? On the collapse of print of service, sort of like the accounting bill we tool and gives your management sort of oversight on an inspection progress, whether they do or don't. Uh, and that's to optimize future routes for better efficiency. So you have a, you're tracking progress and what you've been announcing associated with that. This all is organized by what we call a light score, ranking of 1 to 4. Each property is assigned a light score based on objective criteria for each image captured. And that's everything from like amount of violations to specific violations, so structural damage would indicate, you know, some sort of serious issue with the property that needs to be addressed. And uh, that would rank higher, obviously. So this is sort of the way of organizing that in an official fashion. Um, and that allows you to visualize areas that most need of attention and measure an impact from remediation efforts over time. Uh, this also supports some data-driven decision-making when planning community projects or uh, applying for grants. Uh, in many cases are, in some cases our data is being used to apply for some, for federal grants. But I feel the functionality is, is these executive summaries that we're able to do. Uh, our software auto generates clear executive summaries that highlight key findings, city-wide share trends and uh, report on progress, right? Uh, they're designed to support city council presentations, like this one out, uh, team strategy meetings and grant applications. This supports staff by letting you focus on engagement with residents rather than time-consuming paperwork. Essentially, this report is going to give you a high-level overview of the city and the issues within the city just in a click of a button. You have a 20-page presentable PDF report, ready to go, ready to rock for each individual council meeting or each individual uh, team meeting, strategy meeting, whatever. So this is, it's uh, quite the proactive adjustment for life. We talk a lot about going, in theory, being able to go from a reactive code enforcement uh, department to proaction, right? Uh, you can visualize and prioritize bottom properties and maximize your team's time area, and all of these, they have a historical record of these properties, right? Uh, the status story for about seven years, so on each property or point, you're able to see the past photographs and images of that property over time. Uh, although it's based on it, it's just that can you use, say beautiful and keep that with vibrant path, including voluntary compliance and overall pleasing, including occasions to quality of life and business. Um, that's my guy. Thank you also for the time and I'm happy to answer any questions. If that's important, you're welcome.
How many false positives? What's, what's the error rate?
How many false positives? What's the error rate?
Uh, great question. We're 90% accurate, uh, all of our detections, uh, arise in perfect. So we do have within our web application, I know this is a different slide that, you know, tailored to this, this meeting, but when you click on an individual property or you happen to see a false positive, you can flag it, uh, which helps the data sampling computer, uh, with our overtime. But over 90%, for example, sometimes takes a while.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How long between data collection drive and like a report is provided, it would be accessed?
How long between data collection and reports being able to be accessed?
Like uh, how quickly does it upload?
Yes.
Uh, it uploads essentially overnight, so near real-time, so you got it drive available the next morning on the desk of the computer.
Okay, thank you.
What's the median, uh, average population of the cities that actually do this today?
So the question was, what's the median population, the average-sized population for the cities that you currently work with?
Well, that's a quick question. Uh, our largest city, uh, is soon to be, well, currently actively is about 700,000, I believe, and then our smallest being below 20,000. So I would say, I think, probably not like 120, we're probably going to switch that, I think. Uh, but yeah, we have a wide range.
Good.
So for a community that has 100, a population of 120,000, their average, what uh, program have they subscribed to? How many cameras?
So for your, let's say 120,000, um, how many cameras do they have?
Uh, we recommend four for a city of that size. We have sort of, we have sort of a pricing structure and we, 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 it's based on a variety of factors, including population size, population count and different things like that. But you also want to get your coverage, right? What vehicles are we using and what are the routes like? Obviously, there's some internal hygiene that goes on with the cities in terms of maybe adjusting their driving workflow or maybe not. We install those, uh, we install, couldn't put the vehicles, we can install garbage trucks, so garbage trucks are really big because they cover the whole city weekly. But also couldn't put the vehicles as well. Um, commonly, uh, I actually just recently have got another, we have one in our city, um, that's around 150,000 that, in their case, they're just using one camera on a couldn't clean a vehicle, um, that they're going to use sort of as, as they're thinking, that it won't be, you know, full coverage, but you know, basically collecting a material of priority. I said, I'm sorry, I didn't answer the question.
Well, I know in, um, when Keith and I met you before, met with you before, we kind of talked about um, square mileage, because we might have a population, you might have other cities that have more dense population, but we're pretty small.
Exactly. So um, for a city with a, a higher population density, it may have smaller square mileage, it may require a few cameras, because if you're not driving that, you can cover more area. Uh, for a city like Kewaunee, I would definitely recommend uh, one camera, as we discussed previously.
Okay, thank you.
So just to be quick, they have recommendations for us to do the one camera?
Yes, because the one camera captures both sides of the street as it goes down.
So it's, yeah, thank you for explaining about that, Casey. It's uh, we got like the data collection units, DCUs, and we have a, a dual lens and a single lens. So a dual lens being both sides of the street. This is great for uh, code enforcement vehicles as well as rear-loading uh, garbage trucks. By the way, time we run, we install one uh, single lens DCU, because it's all like a, a side-loading uh, garbage truck, right? Because a side-loading garbage truck touches both sides of the street. Whereas a rear-loading goes down one way. Um, similar situation with a, a code enforcement vehicle typically, you know, winding through the city, but anyway, um, that, that would be the case there.
He touched on how many customers he has and if he's, if he would do any kind of trial.
Uh, Keith wanted to, if you could touch on how many customers you have and if you're willing to do any kind of trial period?
Um, actively, we have, we have 10 customers throughout the United States and we would not be, we do not do any trial periods currently. Um, they're a pretty big lift for us, the clients that we move forward with, we sort of, we, we, we go right in. If that became a functionality in the, in the future, um, I'm not sure if that, but uh, that's the way we do it.
Okay.
Okay, Tim, how, what is the average length of time that he's in, has customers? I mean, are they repeat customers or are returning?
Um, the 10 customers you have, have they?
How long have they been with you?
So we have, we have a couple, uh, we have like a, we've been a company for five years, selling commercially for about two, two and a half. Um, so we're a small company. Uh, we've grown from three team members, one being myself, five years ago in a garage, to now over 14 active team members. And we have uh, three repeat active clients, reacquired customers and the rest of uh, you know, are newer, newer-ish, I guess, clients who uh, you know, were looking forward to the tech and resign in the future. So the end of that, particularly selling commercially, uh, you know, when we started selling commercially before then, we sort of uh, we were working essentially, so what we call pilot, pilot customers, right? Things that were helping us develop product.
Okay.
And who are still, who are still our customers today.
Anybody else? Anything else? Okay, I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Um, thank you all for your time and uh, I look forward to hearing from you.
Yep, Keith and I will be in touch.
Great.
Thanks.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Bill number 2555, ordinance approving and authorizing execution of the TIF agreement by and between the city of Forte and Cape Town real estate. This is a TIF agreement between the city and Cape Town, the development of Cape Town is responsible for the new car wash currently under construction near the intersection of Temi and West Leclerc Streets. Do I have a motion?
Second.
End discussion.
Just, just to be clear, uh, we have, we had discussion about the length of the term and the fact that half of the EAV, uh, on the remaining life of a TIF works out to about six years and under the old, under the former agreement that it could be, uh, had to be made back in five. So we talked about officially giving them a little bit of cushion and moving that out to seven years. Um, I did meet with them last, uh, week, I think on Thursday, uh, after we had the revised agreement and the ask of, their concern is that the first year... Their concern is that the first year, it would be not a full amount of taxes because it would be based on the value of the property at the beginning of the year. So they asked if we could make that cumulative and basically any shortfall after the seven years is the difference that they would have to make up instead of automatically having any difference in year one. I don't think there's an issue with that. It seems fair. I reached out to the attorneys and asked our attorney to get us an agreement to that extent. Not thinking that it would take more than a day to get that, but we don't have that agreement yet. So I would propose that we did not approve the agreement as it's written, but as amended or as discussed for that amendment and we'll have the city attorney verify that the agreement says what we wanted it to and that our TIF attorney put it together the way that we wanted. I wouldn't consider it until it came to a synag. But I don't want to hold up the car wash folks for another two weeks.
I did talk to a member of the car wash group in Cape Town and they said they are satisfied with the agreement as proposed here.
Does this is proposed now with Gary saying?
Yes.
What the, the current one in there says, so the six years or the seven years?
The, the seven years.
Okay.
Give me.
I'm not voting on this, but I would request clarification. Because I'm confused, so. With, with agreement is the council discussing, the one you just described or the one that's posted there? Because that's the confusion. I'm confused.
The one that was described, the seven year?
Seven years is not the question. It's whether it's, it's compared on an annual basis or cumulative basis.
Cumulative.
Okay.
They're on the same page.
So this agreement is cumulative that's in the packet?
What's in the packet right now is not. It looks at it annually.
So what we're approving is not this, the amended agreement?
The first page in this had a little statement in there that said.
And that's, and that statement's what made them okay.
Not this unamended statement?
Yes, that's what they're, okay.
So do we need to rescind our votes and do, or do we need to approve it?
You can make a motion to accept as amended, then we can go through that vote and then we can vote.
We don't need to rescind anything. All right, I'll make a motion to review it as, or accept it as amended.
Second that.
And any other discussion on that?
No.
Please call roll.
Councilmember Sernich?
Upstate.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Comick?
Aye.
Councilmember Colber?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to.
No.
That was just.
That was two.
Oh, okay.
I want to get it actually hold on.
Yes. That's okay. Councilmember Sernich?
Upstate.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Comick?
Aye.
Councilmember Colber?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
That one's why I'm saying, bill number 25564, resolution to ward demolition of 505th Avenue to the loss responsible bidder. This is a resolution that will ward demolition of left bay destruction at 505th Avenue. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I just want, we, when this bid was put out, they asked for a clean fill or backfill with concrete. I, I have an opinion. I would like to know your guys' opinion. The clean fill will allow, if somebody wanted to buy the property, to construct without a lot of, going through a lot of red tape and extra expense. But they're just.
But that puts the expense on us upfront.
Yeah, puts the expense on us upfront. And there's also just a certain area of the town where the likelihood of somebody building are just not there. I can see just being a problem that somebody would build or buy to extend their yard or to put up a garage or the utility shed, something of that sort. I know we talked in the past about, you know, what the difference would be, but to get the clean fill, that's almost doubling. The price is close to doubling and I just don't know, we don't want to get into that.
Yeah, we double the price, that's half the properties we can deal with.
We're going to, yes, it's going to cut our, what we do.
I think, I think the clean fill conversation needs to be around a bit, somebody that's looking to build a structure on it and come to us and say, hey, I want to build a house on this corner now. I'm interested in this or whatnot. That basically, they're alone or whatnot.
I, I would, yeah, I think extended within circumstances would be the only time we would do this of that.
Correct. And also within budget, we have three other, two of another house, I mean, that I won't have, then, you know.
At least we looked at it. Thanks for looking at it. There's a significant difference between the low and the high bid, like seeing.
Yeah, crazy. And just to be clear, you know, I'm going to continue this process for future demolitions as well. So you, you can always have that as an option, so, and we'll continue this as normal.
Yeah, that's excellent.
And then you. I was just going to say, this, the high bidder, they're not from around here.
Yeah, they're, they're from Chicago area, so. Interesting thing is, we have a commercial demolition going on here. It's way heavier than this house and that demolition is costing less than this guy did on this small house.
Yeah, that turned me off the first time.
I did too.
Yeah, I opened the bid and that was the first one I opened.
You can comment on it. I'll leave that now. So do we need to clarify?
It's needed. Let us know which bid and which fill, which company which fill.
It's the lowest bid, but the backfill.
The lowest cost, basically.
Okay, so man and gay with the concrete brick?
Yes. Any other conversation? Please call roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Comick?
Aye.
Councilmember Colber?
Aye.
Councilmember Sernich?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager, mayor and city clerk to convey the state's interest in specified real estate to the people of the state of Illinois, Department of Transportation for highway purposes as well as temporary and permanent easements to the same. This is a resolution that will allow the city to transfer land to the state of Illinois. This is part of the process that will allow the state to begin roadwork on West Sixth Street. We've been waiting for this project to begin for quite some time. In the packet, the sale of land refers to a lot of areas of Tenny subdivision. So I don't want people to be confused if they've looked at the packet that this is work that's being done on Tenny Street. This is actually Route 81 or West Sixth Street where the work is to be done. How about a motion?
So moved. Second.
Now, any discussion?
You have to approve before they change their mind. Is that a layman's explanation? I read through it all and, and I think it's, I think it's actually just two easements and two temporary and one permanent?
All descriptions and it just.
I, it just, just kind of like, we're actually talking about South 81, between Grove and something, like where is this? I mean, and I, because I kind of couldn't tell.
No, it is really hard to tell from that. I have, to my knowledge, the property we own on Sixth Street would be right at Cottage.
Cottage, that's right. Like, like where, is there a little station there?
Yeah, the property on the other side of the station.
On the other side of Cottage. And what are they going to use the property for? Is it to actually widen the road? And there's also two temporary easements?
Temporary, the temporary easements would allow them to put the equipment and stuff on the property.
Okay.
So it's outside of what the normal right of way will be once it's widened through there.
Yep, and, and then the permanent one is, is to widen the road.
Correct.
Or maybe drainage, right?
There is a drainage issue there because there's a creek that runs right through that property.
I know most of the residents are affected, with the exception of one that had some issues. They've all pretty much been very supportive, but the one resident that had some issues, I think, is, fears have been laid to rest and he's now online. So I don't think there's anybody that was not, you know, gone along with their request from the state.
There is one property. The mobile home parks.
Yeah, the mobile home parks, but with any luck, we may resolve that and go with it. So any other discussion on this matter? Please call roll.
Councilmember Comick?
Aye.
Councilmember Colber?
Aye.
Councilmember Sernich?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Next, we have bill number 2566, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement related to compliance measures at the city solid waste transfer station. This is a resolution to show the city's members to conduct business at the Quinlan transfer station in accordance with the IDPA regulations. Go ahead, a motion.
So moved. Second.
And any discussion?
I, I think that this resolution says that there was an immediate concern, compliance concern? Was there an immediate compliance concern that this is response to or?
I would say in the eyes of the state, yes.
Yes, so what, what was that?
There, there are issues with regard to the drainage that's there that needs to be addressed and litter that has been accumulating on the site at, at different times. We've already taken strides to, to address those concerns and have made improvements in how we operate and what we do. But they're going to insist that we agree. Just say this.
Yes. So I guess just my approach to this, as I read this, we had a complaint. We should execute a root cause analysis, like why do we have this problem? And then we're going to agree to a resolution, interim order. But I haven't read an interim order. I don't know what we're doing to correct this and, and I have no confidence that it's going to be corrected if we don't even know what we're saying to do.
And that is an oversight on my part. We are, are we expecting another draft or?
No, I think that is the final draft.
Okay, so I failed to put it in the folder for it to get included. So if you want to table this until the next meeting, we have, our attorney's been back and forth with the state.
Effectively, if I'm going to summarize, the real takeaway is the agreed order says you're going to keep doing what you've been doing to keep addressing these problems and if you don't, the following penalties will apply. It's more making sure that those steps continue being taken. Is, is there major concern along with, there was one other permit they were looking into?
They want us to get a permit for something that we did, but didn't have a permit for and we're promising that we'll get the permit.
Okay, so I guess I'm moving forward with this if we're able to see that. I, I would like to see that product, just, it's our job to make sure that we're doing what we say we're doing and not just voting on saying that we're going to say we're going to do it.
What steps have to take to remediate the issues upon it?
We have more clearly defined what the expectations are and what's allowed out there and what's not allowed out there. And we've started supplementing the individual who's out there by sending in additional staff to help with cleanup efforts.
There's a law being maintained too, correct?
There's a law being maintained and they're taking pictures to show when they're out picking up the trash. And a lot of the trash doesn't come from us. It comes from people that are bringing trash. Maybe a load that's not properly tarred or some of the trash trucks that have stuff flowing out after they dump, and it's that kind of stuff that just needs to be cleaned up on a regular basis. And so we're, we're documenting the fact that we're doing it. So when an inspector comes out, if there's anything there, we can say, yeah, we know there's something there, but look, we can show you that we did pick it up. We just haven't had a chance to get back out there now. And they're fine with those kind of compliance efforts. Is that kind of it?
So what, I was going to say, when will you have the documents to us?
I can give them to you.
And once we get that, I can retroactively put it in the packet if anybody, any residents or anybody wants to look at it.
Thank you.
So you ready to roll on this now or?
Here.
Please call roll.
Councilmember Colber?
Aye.
Councilmember Sernich?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Comick?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
And next, bill number 2567, resolution expressing the intent of the city council regarding the purchase of the mortgage note for the Quinlan mobile home parks from the Persevered Community Bank. This resolution is for the city to take steps to acquire the mobile home parks in Quinlan. It is important for the city to see these properties developed and maintained, not just for the residents' experience that is out there, but also to offer affordable housing, which is very needed in Quinlan. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
End discussion.
I think you want to say something? No, I, I mean, what discussion, you know, do we need to have for the constituents? I mean, I know we've discussed it, but.
Well, we need to put the. What, yeah.
Can you just clarify that this doesn't mean we're purchasing the land right now?
Correct. What we're, what we are purchasing is the bank's position as the lead holder to then finish up the foreclosure process, at which point in time we will then own that property. So there's more of a legal process that still has to happen. The property will be put at a foreclosure sale ultimately, after likely a default judgment of foreclosure is entered. There's a redemption period that I intend to ask the court to shorten. And after the expiration of that redemption period, it's normally nine months, but that is, will likely be shortened. After that point, we will then end up owning the property.
But it now fits us.
Correct.
So the $150,000 that we're putting is basically buying the bank's loan in their position, right?
Correct, yes. And up to this point, they already obtained jurisdiction over Quinlan Partners through publication. So they already were through those steps of the process. So it's going to be more expedient to do it this way as well than if we'd started from scratch.
Have we figured out where that $150,000 is going to come from, what fund?
I would propose that. But you can hear me if I'm being closer to you to hear better.
I know.
I would propose that we use funds from the economic development.
As long as, I mean, as long as we're all in agree, I mean, the funds have to come from somewhere and I'm okay with that, as long as we're all agree with that and it doesn't, you know, and if you guys are okay with that, I would, I would like to see the funds come from that, you know, if that's where we're going to make them come from. I think that's the part that we need to kind of clarify a little bit in here too. Because we just, we're working on the budget and we had, we don't have $150,000 anywhere in the question.
We have $150,000 of the economic development fund.
We do, but I'm saying this is not earmarked in that fund for whatever.
No, but that is a fund that we typically appropriate the entire amount just in case something like this comes up, which is an opportunity to make sure that that property is properly managed.
And full transparency to the public out there, just want to make sure that we know where the funds are coming from, what we're doing. You know, we're getting spent because we've still got a lot of dividends and stuff. You know, we're getting spent because we've still got a lot of dividends and stuff to get done. I just don't want it to look like we're throwing money at something that, you know, we got everything fixed.
And also just for the record, the bank did have this property appraised a few months ago. And it was appraised from their appraisers near a million dollars. So it appears according to their appraisal that we're getting a bargain. Anything else? Please call Rome.
Councilmember Sernovich?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Coman?
Aye.
Councilmember Coliver?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
I disagree with the discussion on the motorized scooters. We discuss motorized scooters, scooters within the same limits.
I'm sure you guys read the packet, so I'll try to make this brief. But basically, we were clarifying some language in two different ordinances that were conflicting each other.
There were a lot of conflicts.
Yes. So in August of '24, we, the state, basically said scooters are going to be illegal unless cities and other governing bodies want to create an ordinance. So we did that. We followed the direction of the state code, which basically said we had to do that. These were the things you have to put in that ordinance. So we did that. We also have an ordinance in a different chapter about sidewalks that bans the, any type of scooter, gas or electric from the roadway. Whereas the one enacted in August allows them on certain roads, basically not state highways, nothing faster than 35 miles per hour. So we want to figure that contradiction out and see what we want to do going forward. And then within the sidewalk ordinance, it basically says about the central business district area, which is like downtown area, is that they can't be on the sidewalks. And then the next paragraph says they can be on sidewalk if they drive safely, basically. So it's kind of silly that it was in there for that one specifically, so.
Does it boo the power with water?
No. It would be like a scooter. Yeah. Yeah.
Some people are like, go straight, push?
No.
Go straight across it?
Yeah, absolutely. No, those aren't considered for this ordinance.
Another one I don't really understand there is 18 years or older. I don't know why it wouldn't just be a valid driver's license.
Yeah, like that's from the restrictions from the state. They say, basically the law says if you're in that ordinance, here's where it is. So that's where that 18 years came from. We handle about eight or 24 complaints on scooters right now every day.
There?
You know, over a three month period. I just ran those. So it's not a terrible concern. You can follow Facebook and stuff and see it's kind of popping up. We have a big accident, but juvenile was, you know, a big concern. So that's why I started looking at these, make sure we're where we wanted to be. We want to allow these, we can just go out of state and take this ordinance away and not allow them at all. We can adjust that to they can be on roadways and just take out the portion in M7004. That's bans of...
Well, any ordinances that we pass are only as good as how they're enforced.
Yep. So our initiative really isn't about ticketing on this. So a lot of these people are kids or are going to be maybe not have a lot of money. So what we've been doing for past couple of months, if officers see somebody that looks to be under 18 or breaking some kind of the ordinance or the state law, we'll make contact with them, let them know what's going on. Maybe go to the parents if we need feel like that's necessary to say, hey, your kid's 15, likes to go to the park on this thing, but you're not supposed to. If we see your kid outside on the sidewalk in front of their house doing moves, we're probably not going to start enforcing that. And we can, but I don't think that's really what the spirit of that law is for.
So can you guys revisions?
Yep. I just kind of want some direction. Do we want to allow them on the way? Maybe not. Please call Rome.
I think some adults.
Right.
Yes. Those who are in not everywhere, however sidewalks, appropriate. We don't have bike lanes. I mean, this is a, this is a product that's huge.
In abundance, it's something more so than that.
I remember this came up several years ago, our people. And back then, it ended up being kind of a fad. It died out about as quick as it picked up. And so I don't know if that's going to be the case here now or?
I think back then, they were not affordable. They're $800 to $1,000 for one of these things. And now that they are being mass produced and kids are, I mean, parents are affording them, I don't think it's a fad. I think it's only going to get...
One of the things I'm working, I've seen motorized, like not just these electric, they don't kind of pull out a mass. I've seen the motorized, well, they're motorcycles, but they're small, you know? You can buy them at like Farm King or something like that.
Yeah, so that would be this. That would be...
But I see those on the side.
Sure. Yep.
You know, so like that's something that I personally would like to keep in because it's like, that's dangerous. That's got mass mind. If that runs over somebody, that's going to be...
Are you talking like a moped or like a little?
No, it's a mini bike. It's a mini bike.
Yeah, so that wouldn't be proper. That would fall under state law for like...
We don't have motorcycle in here.
That's right here. Yeah. There are so many crosshair on this.
I mean, this is, so basically what we're looking at is low speed electric scooters. What do we want to do with it? And then obviously the motorized... The riding, so like operation and riding of motorized scooters on this. But then low speed electric scooter, what do we call it? Like?
I'm not following you. Go ahead.
So at the beginning, it says regarding operation of motorized scooters on sidewalks and roadways, addressing the conflict in language. So are we going to be calling the things that most kids are riding today, low speed electric scooters that go 20 and below?
Yeah, you could put that if you want to put a speed limit on it. You know, like for the, for like your concern with the sidewalks, you know, they have a small two cycle engine. If they're over that, then it's going to fall probably under the state guidelines, which you have to have a license driving on the roadway. Call it like a motor vehicle, registered, have insurance. I would suggest just leaving the electric one we just did alone, obviously, because we're kind of bound by what the state has and put in a reference into this one or, because that does cover, the motorized scooter in '97 does cover gas power, which the electric will not.
Are we bound by that? By what? Are they targeting like rental scooters that are in like large cities? Are they really talking about these law large scooters or?
Yeah, I think they, like you said, became a little popular and it kind of just popped up.
Yeah.
And the state was like, okay, we got to figure something out.
I think it was probably based off the, or scooters that are aligned, covering big cities and created ordinance around that, not looking at, you know...
Right. I would suggest maybe referencing the two ordinances, clean the language up, just so people can know, like, these are the ones you need to check. Again, because of the electric scooter one is just for electric ones, where the M7004 covers gas. So unless they get over that, those bigger ones you're probably seeing are probably not authorized.
No, they are not.
Yeah. They're reading, they're reading traffic laws at that point.
For sure.
Yeah, it's like riding a dirt bike on the sidewalk. It's like, whoa, you can't do that. So we don't have an ordinance for everything, but.
Obviously, we want to cohabitate, but we also want to know how we need to give your department guidance to enforce the things that are problematic.
Yep.
Obviously, we don't want to put things in here and then have you guys, eh, that's not a fair way, that's a machine.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
I don't want to put you guys in that position either.
Sure.
We don't want to put the residents in that position.
Absolutely.
I think downtown is an area that we would like to protect pedestrians over.
Yeah.
Ease of, you know?
My opinion is you're walking out of a store, you open the door, you're not looking.
Correct.
Way and get in a shit type situation where that law is from. That's been around for a while.
Right.
So I'm just looking for a little kind of something.
It allows it on the sidewalks if they're operating in a safe manner.
Yep.
Outside.
I would ban it in the downtown area.
Take, outside of your downtown, doesn't...
That's what I would do.
That is, I think that needs to be invented.
Yep. Okay. And then we want the roadway portion, according to sidewalk ordinance, it says it can't be on roadway. I, like you mentioned, we don't have a good trowel other than this, you know, if there are sidewalks everywhere, we don't have bike lanes. I think roadway is fine if they're operating safely.
I would agree. I think it can seem treated like bicycles.
Yeah. And they should be. The big problem is a lot of people are having issues, not with the scooter itself on the roadway, is that they're not obeying traffic laws. They're both stop signs and things like that. And they do that on bikes too, a lot of bikes.
There's a lot of bikes out there that...
They're slow down here.
They don't realize that there's cross traffic.
Yes. You know, on your major roads, they know, but your four way stops.
A lot of the parents do.
Yep. And that's where we kind of decided to go that route. If we need to talk, we see a kid, talk to him, and then next day we see him again, maybe we'll talk to the parents too. Like, hey, this is, you know, dangerous, you just had an accident.
How often does that happen?
What's that?
That you have to take the next step to the parents?
I don't know that offhand. I'd have to check.
I'm just, just for curiosity.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I can check and see how much of a fall off is done with the officers.
So just for clarity, if we're asked or allowed on roadways, that's what we're going to do?
Yeah, we can put them on roadways.
And then sidewalks outside of the downtown district.
Correct. Lovers are operated safely.
Lovers are operated safely.
Yeah, and that's correct. Driving, walking, do all the safety manages.
So we're adding that language into here and then they still have to follow like that nighttime kind of link on them.
Yeah. Just like, that's kind of like a bike law too.
Yeah.
Excellent. I'll get there.
Thank you.
I'm here for the next one.
Okay. Moving on to the discussion on the urban SDK data collection program.
All right. So I hope you guys were able to go through all the stuff I sent you. This was kind of like a cold call pitch to me. I think Faber had brought up some speed, another speed sign last year. So I took the call. We had two Zoom meetings with the representative. It was really impressive software from what we went through over the two and a half hour meetings. Just to kind of sum it up, basically it's a map of Kiwanis. I could go in, I can click each like 100 block of Kiwanis and see if there's a speeding issue. I, it has like graphs and data that can give me, say, here's your top 10 speeding areas in town. So I can get that data, push it off to our patrol sergeants and they, and they actually can log in and do that themselves. And if we did go for it, we would probably get something like that where the patrol officers or patrol sergeants would take care of it. But the data is got from different devices that we have on us, cell phones, your On-Stars, you know, Google, all that data is out there. They're just grabbing it and deciphering it and then charging us money to get it. It's from him, from the representative, they said they got four out of five car on the roadway at any given point. I talked to a couple chiefs, or one chief and a sergeant in two different places, Pinecrest, Florida and Foxborough, Massachusetts. And they both loved it. The one chief said he probably not asked four, four out of five, he guessed three out of every five if you had to take a guess. But he loved the software, talking to the guy years ago, matched up with their own speed data they were collecting through like speed boxes. The big thing is the price, you know, it's 13 to 14 or almost $15,000 a year if you have a contract length. It's definitely a want and a need type situation, you know, we're able to do what we can do now with our speed sign program and just being on patrol and running radar. This just makes us a little more efficient, or I'd say a lot more efficient.
So rewind, they take data that's already like, if I'm in my shotgun driving, they're going to ping that data and find out how fast I'm going.
So it's just data that's being collected and they're purchasing it from whatever company?
I know, I know.
I was saying, we're not going to do all that.
You know?
It's all anonymous. Yeah. The whole, yeah.
No, that's, I mean, that's not...
I know. I know. I was getting there. I was getting there, that's what I was...
These whole like fourth event thing, I don't know. Just got to watch out for it.
Yeah, it's all, it's all anonymized. It's all data that we can buy if we wanted to buy.
Correct.
There's nothing...
Yeah, they're just buying it, putting it through their software and give us access to it.
Yeah. And there's no speed cameras, no nothing we have to do, just data that's...
There's data that's there. He gave me like a little snapshot and I was able to navigate a little bit. It was pretty impressive how easy it would be to do and then they, they'll get trained and stuff like that.
So let me ask you a question, backing up to the signs, the speed signs. So do we have data that proves that the sign is effective? And then if the sign is moved, that is still effective in that area? Or is it just a deterrent while the signs are?
I would say it's effective while it's there. We've had multiple places where we've had it for three weeks. Our program is a three week program. We do ghost mode, it's live, we're showing your speed and then we grab that data to see if it's worth a patrol going out there and run radar. So we'll do that and move it. And then we'll keep moving that down the road and we've had to come back to same spots. So I think it's a, it's kind of like on E Street when you're going down the hill, you're like, oh, yeah, hit the brakes a little bit. So it is like a deterrent there. This wouldn't be a deterrent other than us being able to use that data.
Yeah. That's a deterrent.
Yeah.
So what we do with the speed signs is a temporary solution.
Yeah.
And this would validate when they're not worked.
Correct.
You can look at this and see five months later, our speeds reduced there, did they pick back up as soon as the sign?
Yep. Also with like the project we're on with the state for like the traffic coming, they can measure that and say, hey, does this cut to, does this work? You put a, you know, speed bump in or a roundabout, you can look at your data before and then after and say, did this work or was it a waste?
So we spend this kind of money on more data collection. We get smarter and better. What do we do with that?
So basically for us, they're doing all the data collection, they're doing all the reports, they're doing great. And we have to go out there and do it then. So we have to get myself and Mike would be on top of that as well as our patrol sergeants to set up details, I would say daily. We're going to say on first shift, you know, your top five speeding places are here. And then, you know, from four to eight, when second shift's by themselves, here's your top five speeding places and then night shift, you know?
Are you prepared to incorporate that into your patrol strategy? Because I mean, I don't know, maybe perhaps your department does set up stationary monitoring. But I guess I would assume that most of your patrolling is mobile.
Uh, no, there's, it's mobile, it's to make sure of both. It depends on the officer. Some guys like to be more mobile than sit. I like to do both. There's, I have my spots in town where I have a good set. These are my spots.
Specifically where?
Yeah. I don't go out there anymore. But you're there.
Chief, that would be my, like, you know, the dollar amount is there. But more, I would be interested to understand how you and, and, you know, your staff would employ the knowledge and how it would make your efforts more efficient? How you could maybe say, hey, this will actually take a half man off the streets and over time we're getting more efficient and...
Yeah, and that's the hope is that we're able to, speed's not going to stop. This is going to solve our speeding problem.
But I mean, that's with any data collector.
Yes.
It's like more data is more data.
So this data isn't just like...
Where you are with it.
Yeah, and this, this data is just raw data coming in. This is coming with a, a plan of attack, basically. I can look at that. I can click on it. They have my top 10. They have an index where it says, I can show, hey, Lake Street, 800 block, 900 block is a high index, it's a high collision index. So I know that's a problem. And for us, with our frontline software that we have, we have that extra control capability where we just put that in.
Right.
The officers see it, they're supposed to check it daily. Most of them do. We have to get on sometimes like, hey, you guys, this one didn't get checked, let's get on it. So and our supervisors and myself and me start checking up on them to make sure that's getting done. So that could implement into our strategy already, especially with our like extra patrol.
I guess what I'm saying is that y'all probably already know.
And that's what I was going to bring that up, is that we know our spots generally. Now, are there spots maybe that we're not aware of? Sure.
Certainly.
Absolutely. You know, there could be some guy that gets off work late and he tears down, you know, Harrison Street.
Right.
And, you know, we're just not aware of that because it's not a trap, you know, Lake Street, E Street, Main Street, 10E, Sixth Street. Those are, you know, South Street, those are big speeding areas. So, yeah, we do have a good idea. That's why I kind of say it's more of a want than a need. We're able to get by with what we got. This is just, I think, a good piece of technology we should have in the back of our minds if we want to go forward with it.
Something else that you had mentioned previously was, you know, if a resident calls and says that, you know, people are speeding down my street all the time, rather than having to deploy a speed sign or have officers go sit, they can just go look at the data and just say, actually, no. Everybody's fine. It's just when you're standing out in the yard with your kids and somebody goes by at 30 miles an hour. It appears that they're going really fast because you're out there, but according to the data, that's not the case and we don't need to spend time.
And both of the officers I talked to and the chief and sergeant said, you know, there's a lot of perception issues with speed. We have the same problem. That did happen with our speed sign where grandma was babysitting her kids. They're just tearing up and down my street. We're like, okay, we'll be out there. So we put it out there. We had like one car going 38 miles an hour, two, the rest were, you know, under the speed limit up to 35 miles per hour. The rest were, you know, under the speed limit up to thirty-five miles per hour. It's not really a speeding issue on her, but she, her standing there with their children, totally valid complaint. But now we can just grab this data and it actually gives you the report to send to them and share that data with them. Say, here, here's our data that we have, man. And they make them happy and they not.
Just one question for you. Are you able to interface with that data and do your own overlay over top of it with what you're finding across time? Or is it just what you see is what you get?
So it goes back, we would start and it would go back two years for us and we'd have that data. And I believe we can always go back and say, hey, last year, we had a speeding problem by someone's house and we can look at that two years ago. I can double check on that.
I guess what I mean is if, say you've done your enforcement on a particular, are you able to put a pin on a particular location or mark up the map that you're getting with where you started, it's coming from on the fly with it?
Gotcha. I'm not sure if we can do that on that software, but I know our, our frontline software tracks our director patrols to where we've been and those are easily, easily accessible.
Those trucks would be not be.
I know, right? You've got like ten more here.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Well, if anybody has any more questions on this, we'll move on to council communication, council and committee.
You are. So I am continually seeing, hearing, having people tell me about LRS trucks dumping recycle with the trash. And it's just something that is just not going away. Could I please have a statement from LRS saying that they are in fact not doing that?
Yes.
Because I don't, I don't understand, I think.
Mike, I just got a video probably still, they're happening.
Well, see, that's, and that's, that's what I'm saying. Somebody had actually recorded that.
Well, the statement I'll get is not that they're not doing it, but if you think it's happening, what they're going to do about it.
That's what I'm getting at.
And if, if residents do have those videos, those pictures, whatever, please send them. Like, because I received one last week as well and I sent that and I was like, here's the address, taken, time stamped, what's going on?
Yeah. And I'm not, you know, like I, I, I saw a video of one the other day, but it, I don't, I work in IT. I know how easy it is to make a video. And I know that they're, the person that are personing with it had, was not happy with LRS from the beginning. You know, and I'm not saying that they're, you know, trying to do something malicious or anything like that. But it can't keep going on. We have to address it at some level with LRS. You know, that if they are doing it, A, why? And B, what are they going to do to stop it? You know, I mean, it's just, it, it, it amazes me that we're still talking about it now, you know, but I think it's a problem. It's never going to go away because some people and their perception of it. And when we privatize it, what that was and, and they will never be in agreements with privatizing it and LRS had a negative connotation towards LRS. Uh, but I think what would help them and benefit them is them coming probably in the regular cadence, the manager that came in, they got hired. They came with regular nameless to say, this is our hallways. This is what we've noticed. This is what we've had. Something. I, I haven't seen anything since that last meeting. He said he's been sending things right.
I would encourage them to consider replacing one of the bins with an off color. I mean, every other community that I've lived in, we've had two bins. They were never the same color. They were blue and red, green and, you know.
They were still on top.
Right. So I mean, like.
You can tell the difference. There's nobody.
There is, but I guess like as a, as a manager of people, I can understand that we have high turnover. You have error rates increase.
I, I, I'm going to say.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's reasonable.
No, this is just my opinion that if somebody's in that position, there is no way they are mistaking a recycle container and a garbage container. And I say that because if they are, they should not have been there. So that's, you see what I'm saying? It's an intentional act if that in fact has happened. And that's, that's a hundred percent.
I don't think it's that serious. Maybe it is. Maybe it's.
If I'm, if I'm a guy and I'm working and I want to get my day done faster, what's the easiest way to do it?
That's, that's true. That's definitely a plausible scenario.
So what I'm saying is if that is in fact what's happening, you know, and I, I've seen videos and whatnot. And every time somebody showed me something or said, hey, did you see this? I said, did you contact LRS? And I, they have yet to tell me that they did. So I don't know. Is that video accurate? I don't know. I have no idea. But what I'm saying is I'm tired of hearing about it and we need to address it. So. On another note, switching gears, what's, so just south of Roosevelt, there is some roadwork being done. Apparently with some cones and whatnot out there. You know what I'm talking about? Between Roosevelt and Williams.
I was going to say, could you give me a cross street because Roosevelt.
On East Street, East Street, sorry. Between Roosevelt and William.
It's at the end of the alley.
Yeah. Um, which is, uh, and I don't say it's a nuisance because I live next to it, but.
It's a storm grain there that needs, it's an inlet and it needs that it's brick and it's got water coming in. It leaks like a sieve. They're going to have to, they're probably going to end up lining that. And I know I talked to Chris and I today, he was trying to get some points to figure out. And who's for lining?
What I'm seeing traffic wise is people are coming around the corner. They're accelerating off division. And you got other cars, you know, coming over there and then, you know, there's only a matter of time before you have a collision of some sort. Nobody pays attention to that. So do we have a timeline on one of those things?
I can't give a timeline.
I appreciate that. And then, uh, Fourth of July, I was out at Francis Park, it'll maybe turn out out there. People seemed to really like the park. And I talked to a lady that, um, wanted, she flagged me down, somebody had pointed me out because she wanted to commend the city on the paved trails. She has some mobility issues and she actually has a granddaughter that has mobility issues as well. And they were never able to take advantage of any of that. So she just wanted me to pass that along.
I'll jump on that, man. I can, somebody reached out to me actually, uh, after that, the Fourth of July and said that the new equipment that they have out there, the parking and everything is wonderful. And the improvements that we've done out there are noticeable. So commend the city on that as well.
Yeah. And we were, yeah, I was at Girl Scout camp last week and, you know, we usually go out to that park. Uh, but due to, I don't know if you guys noticed rain and massive amounts of lightning, that's where not exactly the place we wanted to be at that time. Yeah. From the time we were out there, it was, uh, it was a rough day's stuff. Just wanted to pass that along. Okay.
Another thing I want to bring up outside of Francis Park, is that, is that Prairie Chicken Festival is this weekend. I know there's a lot of volunteers helping to make it happen. Thank you to everybody that saw that. It's a big event that is going on. Um, I know there's hoses and, uh, cousin hoses fire breakfast on Saturday. So.
There's a gun bar too.
I say guns and hoses.
He didn't have the side of the hose.
So yeah, I wanted to guns, you know, but, uh, no. So that's going on Saturday morning. It's a lot of things to, um, going around this community Saturday. So it's a really fun weekend. I think they've always enjoyed it. So really excited for that coming this weekend. That's all I have.
Yeah. I was going to talk about the Prairie Chicken Arts Festival. Uh, just to add to Chris, the luau party is Friday, seven to nine, uh, for. So please take part in that. Diane, Pachy and Derek Scott and their, um, committee have been doing an incredible amount of work. And I mean, beautification as well, like, um, the go-kart track, the old go-kart track, they cleared out pounds of dirt and weeds that were growing over that. So, uh, just a lot of work that those ladies and their, uh, committee have been doing. Please go out and enjoy it. Uh, like I said, luau on Friday, seven to nine, chalk art, vendors, um, Sand Hill play on, on Saturday. So please go out and enjoy what your community is putting on for you.
That, that's it? Councilman Baker?
I wish I could, uh, commend all the departments, uh, just become more modernized. You know, I know we're a small town. A lot of time we talk to that. For Kewaunee, we're so small, but like Chris said, I like that they're, they're, we're, we're finding the city, um, please, you know, the, the, trying to do things to, to, to make their job better, you know, to improve things. It costs money to modernize and we can't be cheap and do things, you know, half, half, half hazard. So once again, we know apartments and just everything looking good. Like I said, the park even, I'm excited about the splash pads coming up here. I'm trying to establish work right down there and open up, maybe jump in the water. But, uh, but no, I really just go with the main everyone. Thank you.
Well, you kind of hit on, the only thing I was going to talk about was the grand opening of the splash pad, you know, this Thursday, seventeen, starting at eleven AM. Anticipating to snow daily from eleven AM to eight PM. And Thursday, they are going to be providing music and free snow cones. So take your children to the splash pad for the grand opening on Thursday, eleven AM. That is all I have. And I don't think we have city announcements. So how about you do a drink?
The mood.
Thanks. Please hold on.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Comnet?
Aye.
Councilmember Colber?
Aye.
Councilmember Sirdovich?
Aye.
Mayor Morse?